I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, February 9th, 2016. Having called the meeting to order, I would like to ask that you stand with me as we join in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our instant indication.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for this day that you have so perfectly made and so perfectly ordered. And I thank you that you have assembled us here together this evening to do the job that you have called us to. We thank you, Lord, for that calling, that you have placed us in this position, and thank you for the insight and understanding that you give us as we seek to follow your will for this great town. We thank you for these that have come and assembled tonight. We thank you that you have watched over them and ordered their steps that they might be with us this evening. We pray that as we do the business of the city this evening, that you will guide and direct us in all that we say. We bring glory to your name. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then, we'll move to the minutes of the meeting. Counsel, you have the minutes from the January 26th meeting. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, this evening, we've got some special recognition. We've got some winners here from the Black History Month Essay Contest, and I would like to recognize those folks. And we're going to be joined this evening by our special events staff to hand out some awards in that regard. And so with that, we will... You want to tell us a little bit about the contest and how many folks that we had entered, and a little bit more about the contest itself?
So every year in February, we do have a contest, the Black History Month Essay Contest, for middle and high school students in the area where they write about a historical African-American who means something to them and what they've contributed to history and why they're important to them. So we did have right at 200 essays entered, and we had three winners in middle school, three winners in high school. So that's what we are representing tonight. They do win prizes. They get a Visa gift card, $75 to the first-place winner, $25 to the third-place winner, and then $50 to the second-place winner. So we'll go ahead and announce those.
Well, thank you. And start with our middle school winners. Our third-place winner from middle school is Sam Wiggins. Come on up, Sam. We're going to get you to come up here. And our first-place winner was not able to be with us, but it was Sarah Bagwell. In the high school division, third place goes to Kennedy Bright. Second-place winner, Sarah Pinsky. And our first-place winner was Haley Hutchison. like to recognize Rachel Kaplan, who is the Youth Transitions Coordinator, who is going to introduce at least one member of the EQUIP leadership group. And if the other member shows up, we'll introduce him as well, too. But Rachel, if you and Alex want to come to the podium there, we want to give you a time to tell both counsel and these folks that assembled with us tonight a little bit more both about Abel SC and the EQUIP leadership group.
Okay. Thank you for having us here today. My name's Rachel Kaplan. I'm the Youth Transitions Coordinator with Abel, South Carolina. We're a center for independent living, which means that we help people with disabilities of all ages, all different kinds of disabilities, to reach their highest level of independence. And that's within 23 counties in South Carolina, so we're very busy. We have an office in the Midlands, and then we have an office here in the upstate in Greenville. So what we do is when we help people reach their highest level of independence, it just means that we want people with disabilities to be able to make choices and have control and freedom over the things that they do. So it's not about doing everything by yourself all the time. It's about figuring out who you want to help you, how you want that help, a schedule that you want to set for yourself, the goals that you have for yourself. One of the services that we provide is youth transition services, which is kind of why I'm here tonight, is to introduce one of our EQUIP leaders with our EQUIP leadership group. He has been attending some of these meetings, and he'll keep attending with another EQUIP leader who's not here today. But they're just going to kind of be at this meeting to provide that young adult with a disability presence and perspective, which is often not present in committees and boards and coalition meetings.
My name is Alejandro Cano. I am 21 years old, and my disability is...
And so with Abel, South Carolina, it is a rule for all centers of independent living to have at least 51 percent of the staff members and the board of directors to have a disability, and we're closer to 80 percent. So we really practice what we preach. And what Alex does is he is one of 12 different EQUIP young adult leaders that go out into the community all around South Carolina. This is a statewide grant, so we can cover more than the 23 counties that Abel serves. And he goes out and talks to other young adults with disabilities between the ages of 13 to 28, and just kind of shares his perspective and his experience to help other young adults build self-advocacy skills. So knowing what you want, speaking up for yourself, never giving up, and to help them feel disability pride and understand that the accommodations that they have and that they receive in school through an IEP are things that they're going to need for the rest of their life. So those are accommodations they're going to need in college and in a work employment position so that they can be successful. So we just wanted to kind of put names with faces and be able to meet all of you guys and officially introduce why we're at these meetings and why we think it's so important for us to be here.
Great. Let me see if counsel has any questions or comments. Well, I'm just going to go ahead and give you all notice. Alex has had training in Robert's Rules of Order, so we're going to have to be on our toes from here on out. He's going to be sitting in on our meetings and monitoring what goes on. So we thank you all for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I have a brochure about our services and about the EQUIP leadership group. Should I just leave those?
Tammy, we're glad to make sure that all of us get at least a copy of that. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you again so much for letting us come up here and kind of introduce who we are.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. As the chief makes his way to the podium there, as you can see from the screen behind him, it is that time of year when we have department come and make their annual report. This is a chance for both the chief and his department to not only give the council some oversight into what has taken place in the past year in that department, but also our community. And so as all of our department heads have the opportunity to do this, we welcome Chief Dan Reynolds and his staff this evening and thank them for being with us. Our police department is the largest department in our city and certainly does a good job for our city. One of the things that we ask of our department is to be innovative and to be proactive, and I think we hit both of those marks squarely dead center, and I think you will see that in his report this evening. So Chief, floor is yours, sir.
Mayor Danner, counsel, Mr. Gregors, I'd like to present my report. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce members from my command staff that have helped me put this report together and also responsible for the accomplishments we made this year. First off, I have Captain Matty. Lieutenant Eric Presley. Frank Barner, Lieutenant. Lieutenant Kelly. And our pastor who prayed for me. Preacher Kelly, anybody who mentioned a name. I was told by Mr. Owens not to lean on the podium, so I'll do my best not to do that. I'm also being watched by my staff because whenever I have a liquid on my desk or anywhere, they're always afraid because it does happen and might knock it over. And I hate to mess up this computer. Our mission, or the mission of Greer Police Department, is to provide quality services in partnership with the community to ensure safe and secure neighborhoods. We certainly try to do that in every effort of the department. Our values are partnership, respect, integrity, dedication, and empowerment, and all those values go into the accomplishment of our mission. Last year, in 2015, I have a list of certain accomplishments that we accomplished. All collision reports now are completed on a report beam, which speeds up the process. It also allows a person to get a copy of the report. Doesn't happen kind of department. Control officers are equipped, all of them now, with body cameras. In fact, we're going through our second type of body camera. We've got computerized early warning system called Guardian Tracking System or Early Warning System, which tracks the officer's behaviors. I'll go into that a little further in depth later. We implemented a K-9 unit with two officers. We have the Summer Youth Leadership Academy, which was four weeks long and was gender-based. We had a male and female class. We expanded some of our crime prevention programs and efforts, adding neighborhood watches and national night outsights, and added Project ID. Greer Police Academy Alumni Association members volunteered 1,743 hours, which is a heck of a success in that area. We implemented the police mentoring program, primarily focused on kids or children in the depressed areas of the city or more depressed areas. And we implemented e-tickets this year as part of a statewide project. Eventually, I think there's legislation out there that we all, police departments, are required to have e-tickets. All the equipment was provided by the state through us because we're a test site, which saved us considerable money not having to purchase that equipment. Captain Handy is in charge of professional standards, responsible for grants, general order updates, use of control monitoring, internal investigations, employee tracking, and promotional testing. Employee tracking system, to give you a little insight into what that is. It's a new computerized employee tracking system called Guardian Tracking, and it was placed into service in August of 2015. The system provides ability to maintain accurate documentation of employee productivity, track compliments and complaints, summarize performance to assist with evaluations, early intervention system in case we have issues with officer behavior, they come to our attention automatically through the computer, recognized system for high performers, identify training needs for individual officers. If we track something and we find that an officer has a particular problem, especially in his skill levels, but we can pick it up through the computerized system. To date, we've had 332 entries. We've had three early intervention notices. None of them were negative. It just allowed us to view some of the incidents the officers were involved in and one recognition Use of control, which is of great importance right now and having an impact on all police departments throughout the nation. We had 50 to date for last year. Of those, there was only one discharge of firearm, and that was to kill a deer that was suffering on the side of the road. We require officers to do a full report when they point a pistol or they point a taser. Why? Because we want to know if they pull that equipment or pull a taser or a gun, they better have a reason to use it. So we not only, when they discharge it, but also when they deploy it otherwise. There's only been three deployments of the taser last year, and most of the use of force is hands and feet. One of the interesting developments recently was the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is our circuit, and their decision on the use of tasers. As a result of that, all departments in South Carolina, including our department, need to make some modifications in their use of force policies. Our policy is very restrictive. However, there are still changes that we need to make to comply with the requirements of the court. We've sent it to our attorneys. They reviewed it, had some suggested changes, and Monday morning, we're going to meet with them, or Friday morning, meet with him and go over those, what we're required to change and rewrite our policy. In the interim, we've had videotapes from NASC on legal risks and liabilities with Jack Ryan, who's tried to explain the decision and what officers should do, and we've showed that to all our officers. We are preparing a memo to go out to the officers again to inform them of what they can and can't do with tasers and intermediate weapons based on that decision until we can get our policy changed. We don't want them to make mistakes, and we can do this between now and the time the policy comes out. And it has a significant impact on how we do business. I'm afraid we're going to have to put more hands on when we use force than we have in the past, which could cause more injuries to officers and to citizens alike. In the past, we've never had that problem. Patrol. Lieutenant Barnes is in charge of patrol. We have four shifts, Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta, and also responsible for DPU and traffic unit. It's more a traffic unit today, as DPU spends most of its time and energy on traffic issues. There are four sergeants responsible for different areas of the city. Sergeant Fortenberry is Area 1. Sergeant Ailer has Area 2. Sergeant Eldridge has Area 3, and Sergeant Smith has Area 4. Each one of these sergeants are responsible to develop strategies in each of their areas to address the problems in those areas. Patrol's traffic division focuses primarily on preventing accidents through enforcement, education, and engineering. A variety of different strategies that we use and every department uses to try to prevent accidents. You're going to have accidents, but you still would like to minimize the risk of these accidents. We get a report every month on where the accidents are occurring. Up here is a list of nine locations, eight of which are on 29 intersections, Highway 29 intersections. Reason for that is because there's several million cars that go through there monthly, back and forth through our city on a regular basis. And you can imagine with that kind of volume, if you've ever been at Buncombe in 29 at 5:00 in the afternoon or just a little before that, the kind of backup that you have, plus you're doing construction out there, which also doesn't help the situation. We use a variety of computerized equipment and devices in our traffic program. I know you've seen the signs on Point Set. We've put them up at both ends of Point Set. You're in the immediate area of downtown because of some problems and issues that the downtown businesses were having with speeding through the downtown area, especially in Point Set Street. These signs remind people that they're going too fast and hopefully slow people down. We also have access to the information on these signs through our office computer so we know what kind of issues and problems we're having with speeding in those areas. And we also have portable signs that we've used around the city in neighborhoods where we get complaints about speeding and problems with traffic in those areas. I would also add that we've, Woodruff has barred one of our signs, and we allowed them to bar a sign because they're thinking about purchasing signs and want to see how that functioned. We work closely with all our local departments and share resources whenever we can to help them with problems and issues. Patrol goals for 2016: continue Sunnyside projects, community bombing, and quality of life improvements; target other area concerns in other neighborhoods and work with community on perceived problems; continue area crime analysis to study feasibility of current four area layout, meaning we're looking at developing Area 5, which will require more manpower; start what we call de-escalation training. We're using the former chief of Riley to give that training and share that training with some of the other departments here in the area; and continue expanding problem-oriented policing model with our patrol officers. Criminal investigation headed by Lieutenant Presley, that's detectives, vice narcotics, victim advocate, and crime analyst. Picture of all our different detectives that are assigned to different units. Our crime analyst, our victim advocate, and clerk that work there. Cases assigned by investigations. Some of the cases assigned have dropped a little bit because we've had some shortage of personnel due to transfers to other units. In this department, we send out a lot, put a lot of cases assigned to patrol officers who can better handle some of the situations. Our detectives are used only to handle more serious cases. Another reason for the drop in cases is because we've had less serious cases, which is good. Preliminary indication of crime statistics shows a drop in major crime this year. We also have the vice narcotics unit with also Corporal Farrell and Jonathan McWhite. Their caseload. Corporal Farrell was just recently assigned to the vice unit, so it's taken some time for him to get some training and catch up. Also, McWhite was working by himself for a while, so there's naturally a drop in cases because we don't want these officers out there on their own doing surveillance and other things they have to do that are very dangerous kind of assignments. However, they've worked with a lot more agencies here recently to assist in making cases. We provide resources, they provide resources to us, too. That seems to work well, especially with drug cases, prostitution cases. If we use their agents to, the drug dealers and prostitutes don't know, it's a lot more effective than our officers, who most people in the community know who they are anyway. Accomplishments of the detective division, and these are only a few, I'm trying to limit it to more, the major accomplishments. Detective McWhite began a mentoring program matching police officers with area youth. The program currently includes 14 young boys and girls paired with a completely volunteer staff of Greer police officers. We recently had a dinner sponsored by one of our businesses for the families and the children of those families. We'll conduct more events with them in the future. CID Acquire to begin using software that conducts forensic searches of cell phones used in criminal cases. This software will expedite investigations by reducing our reliance in Greenville County for the same services. The goals for criminal investigations in 2016: increase assistance with investigations in domestic violence cases, actually assigning a detective to deal with most of those cases; reduce prostitution visibility and activity in specifically targeted areas; and full implementation of Area 2 relationship building projects. That's generally the Sunnyside neighborhood area where we feel we just don't have the amount of contact with that particular community and need to build trust and respect with the people that live in those neighborhoods. Operations Support Division is headed by Lieutenant Kelly. He handles detention, telecommunications, records, data entry, property evidence, and animal control. Dispatch calls, especially police calls for service, are on the rise. Part of that is due to the expansion of city limits and some of the annex areas that we've had. It's a slight rise, but I got a feeling when some of the new developments are completed, we're going to have a significant rise in the cost of service in those areas. The detention statistics are about the same as they were before, again, possibly because we haven't had as much serious crime as we have had in the past. Operations Support, Animal Control, that's really jumped up. I feel, this is my opinion, that also is because of the expansion of the city and the new annex areas and new residents that have moved into the area that place and demand on our services. So that one animal control officer stays busy all the time. He takes calls on the phone and sometimes doesn't get there as quickly as possible, but as he can, as people want him to, there are expectations high, but we try to get somebody to handle these complaints at least until he can get there. Property and evidence. We started doing our marijuana testing after we got clearance and OSHA, met the OSHA requirements for the lab this year, this past year. The reason we had to do that is because nobody else would do it for us, and we used to rely on another city to do it, but they decided not to anymore. 2016 goals for Operations Support Division: reduce the number of hours patrol officers are used to relieve detention officers; complete front lobby security upgrades, that's a boot grouping of the front desk; upgrade Greenville E-911. CAD system, that was supposed to be completed this year, however, the contract fell through with Greenville. The company went out of business that they had selected, so now they had to put it out for bid again and make another selection, and hopefully this year the new CAD system will be in place. And hopefully this year the new CAD system will be in place. We want, keeping records of response times, especially now with the expansion of the city, to make sure that it doesn't get out of whack, trying to keep it down to nine minutes or less, which is basically a standard. It's not an official standard for response time, but it is a standard. We want to complete the evidence room audit, and then build and relocate the new kennels that we have budgeted. Administrative support division, that's personnel, community outreach, school resource officers, and training division. Look at these pictures, I think I'm old. Lot of young people, a lot of new people in the department, which is a good thing, too. Understand, though, it takes about two or three years for them to gain the experience they need to really do what we do out there. Fortunately, we have some senior supervisors who are very qualified to handle that. We had our awards ceremony this, this past year, and the supervisor here was Sergeant Nixon Eldridge. Officer of the year was Detective Jonathan McWhite. Rookie of the year was Officer Anna Bennett. And civilian of the year was Shana Matt. She works in dispatch. We graduated two citizen police academy classes, which we do, that's our goal every year. The Greer Police Alumni Association again did 1,743 hours of volunteer hours, worked with us at different events, and conducted two citizens, two youth citizen police academy, gender-based, and we plan to do that again. These programs, the McWhite's program of mentoring and this program with the youth academies, were all spurred by ideas, were all developed by officers, line of officers who felt they needed to develop these programs and put them in place. The outreach sergeant is Sergeant Richardson, who you're all familiar with, and he handles also the school resource officers. In terms of school resource officers, 66 students were arrested for various incidents in the school. Apparently, the two, the media is really interested in how many people, how many reports we've taken in the school and trying to deal with that a lot and now to deal with that over the last five years. Drug cases have sharply declined since inception of the Canine program, and all members worked and assisted with the youth leadership academy from the school systems. Operation Medicine Cabinet took a total of 810,000 medication. We have some outreach collections and we have one at the department, and that seems to be growing. We could probably set up our own pharmacy. Make one decision. Neighborhood watch, we have two neighborhood watch. Don't say that too loud now. I hope they, crooks don't know about this. Two neighborhoods that have joined several and held several meetings with various other groups. I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but we have a bunch of other neighborhoods that are working closely with us and seem to be more energized than they have been past. And 20 neighborhoods of active groups in the city. Coffee with the Cop, another program, I think we copied that from Greenville, and we've held each sergeant's required periodically to have Coffee with the Cop. Basically, what that is, is we go to a restaurant and sponsor this program and let the public know through Twitter, our Twitter account and other means that we're gonna do this and we meet with citizens on a very informal basis and talk about what their problems are, just generally nothing, nothing formal. I did exactly what. People were afraid I would do that. Hope nobody else has to use podiums. Church security, they're a heavy concern, especially since the Charleston event, and we've gone around to different churches to talk to them and discuss security in churches. Amazingly, there's several churches that have people that carry guns for their protection. Alive at 25, our safety program, primarily for youth. During the past year, we added one more instructor to teach the program because of the demand for the program. We have a total of four instructors. 14 classes were taught and 422 students went through our instructions. We now have the cooperation of all high schools, and in order for these students to drive to school, they have to pass this course. Sunnyside project, that's a project that aims to bring residents of the Sunnyside neighborhood together and also with us. A survey of 100 individuals has already been administered and future projects are planned to deal with the issues that they've brought to our attention. Some of the issues are police-related, some aren't. They're quality of life issues, so we're gonna work on both. Our philosophy in that area is try to get things done that are very visible, fix a stop sign, fix a pothole, get a light put up, or whatever, so that they can see that because of what they've done and their participation within our program, that we're gonna do so. You can hardly get people to report crime if you can't fix a sidewalk or a street sign or something else when they report it. Training division, been very busy. We had 94 classes held, 1783 students trained, 12,000, over 12,000 training hours, and an estimated of $15,652 that impacted our economy here. We try to work with a variety of agencies. We share training and we like to bring in US Attorney's Office training and the State's Attorney General. I'm on the advisory committee for the State Attorney General's training program, and we try to bring in as many programs as we can here at Greer and invite other agencies to attend. Some of these classes number about 100 students per. So that brings money into the community, it focuses attention on Greer, and to me, it's a very good thing, benefit for our city. Fire range, we had 252 students trained on the range with a total of 2,340 training hours for the year. Bullet bunker panels and interior rubber were replaced this year. You don't have to replace the whole target, you only have to replace, we replace the rubber fairly inexpensive, plus we're not putting lead in the ground. And we partnership with the US Air Force Corps of Weapons Training. Next is something that we're really proud of. We've got the updated Fats Training Simulator, and any time council members, anybody wants an opportunity to play on the thing or shoot the thing, we'd be more than happy to come with you. Just call us and we'll set it up for you. It's an interactive simulator, numerous real world scenarios allows us to perform proper interaction in verbal behaviors, judgmental use of the crow's scales, shoot, don't shoot skills, less than lethal force options, and marksmanship. Mobile unit allows us, allow use in multiple settings, meaning we can move it around to different places that we'd rather not. It is what comes soon, but we can. And other agencies using, utilizing unit for the animal training in Greenville, Sparkville Airport, Dunkirk Police Department. In fact, we put all the Dunkirk Police Department to do it last week. Again, we like to work with all the other agencies around and share training. They also share equipment and turns with us whenever needed arises. In 2016, we have several goals. We want to install, install a new CAD system with the help of Greenville County. Evaluate our communication system to cover city expansion. The end of life for our current community, communication system is 2017, and that's vastly getting close, and we have to consider what we're gonna do. Are we gonna stay with UHF or are we gonna go to 800 crunking, which is a system that Greenville County is looking at now? And there's been several proposals in terms of 800 crunking made by Greenville. They would like to have the system and the rental fees paid for by the academy. I don't think all the county members want that, but that's been a proposal made by the communications people there in Greenville. Whether they can get that passed or not, I don't know, because there's a lot of infrastructure that has to go on in order to implement that system. But we only have until 2017 to try to get all this done and accomplished. Or do we want the other officers to stay with UHF? But if we do that, then we have to put up, replace a repeater and put up two more repeaters probably, which is expensive, expensive also, and purchase new equipment for vehicles. So we have to work on that. We have the next few years to try to get that done. We're thinking about adding an Area 5, and they have to request more officers to do that, and we've seen a rise. We've been doing some analysis on call service. They've gone up significantly in that area, not to a point yet where they're critical, but it's still, you can see where the, where the calls are going up. And concern we have, too, is the response time to go both north and south of the city in a reasonable period of time. Want to complete the construction of the kennels, complete de-escalation training and ethics training, which is very important. Another concern is professional behavior in terms of police officers, and we're concerned very much about that. Update the AV equipment in our training room, that's nearing end of life. Request reimbursement for body cameras from the state. We completed drafting our policy for body cameras submitted to the state. It was approved and now we can apply for funding for the cameras that we've already got and other expenses associated with that. Good luck. Hopefully, we'll get something out of that. I think we've got a few million, not about $2,000, out of another grant to pay for some of the cameras that we have. And then we want to make sure that we fully implement the EDP program, which helps us from an administrative standpoint, because it's a mission directed to the state and doesn't, we don't have to do some manual calculating that we have to do today with the system again. That's my presentation. If you have any questions now or later, just call me or a member of my staff, and Tammy has a written report that she'll give to you later.
Council, any questions or comments you want to make while the chief and his staff's with us?
I want to make sure it's written and you know what we're doing in Sunnyside.
Yeah, I gotta get with, Chad just hasn't had a chance to, but I'm, contact, he's contacted me and that.
I don't want to do something there without it, or any of us.
Chief, looks like you guys are trying to be as proactive as you can about the things. One example is the, how we, you guys implemented the use of the body cameras prior to it being a national issue, and so let's keep up with that. Good job.
I'd just like to thank all of you for your hard work and dedication to the city. Always nice to hear good reports. You're a good.
Yeah, I get to stay out there and take credit for everything. But I can't. But I would tell you, we have one of the most educated and talented staffs in this area for the state. And all of us. And please.
Chief, as well, I know it's my pleasure to be able to swear in some of our new officers and it seems like not only the quality of person, but education is going up as well, too, in terms of who are attracted into the force, so we appreciate that effort as well, too.
Thank you. I think one of the big issues now is recruiting police officers back. I think one of the fellow decisions is doing something on, on the quality of police that in so many places. We do for that a lot, but we want to have good representation from Grace, Saxon, everything else, but we're not substitute for all of the people that do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to the entire department. We appreciate all the men and women do for us. With that, we're gonna move to the administrator's report. Mr. Driggers?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, a couple of items just to, to review. One is to make you aware that we've already started the budget process for 2016, 2017. So our department heads were given their worksheets this past week. We'll start that process internally. We'll have some discussion with you during your, your planning retreat, your upcoming planning retreat, and then, of course, we'll have some budget workshops as we get closer to that point of adopting final budgets for the next year. Want to make you aware that our Allen Bennett Memorial Hospital demolition project is almost complete. We're at about 95% completion of that demolition project. We are anticipating that we should be able to demobilize off of that site here within the next three to four weeks, and we'll be concluding that project as we move forward. And, of course, we'll continue to have some discussions about that site, and we'll be doing that as part of our annual retreat as well. You are well aware, as you approach City Hall this evening, that there's a great deal of rail work. The city of Greer was founded on a railroad line, and, and that is never more evident than it is right now as CSX are making improvements to their rail crossings. As you can see, we, I believe we were scheduled to get one open tonight. Did it open?
It will be open about 3:00 AM.
Okay, very good.
It will finally be closed.
Very good. Point Set Street line, the crossing here will open overnight, and then just a few hours after that, they will close the Line Street side of that. And then we, later this week, we also are expecting that they will close the South Main Street area. That is scheduled on the 11th for that to close, and I think that's scheduled for about three days for that closure to take place as well. We absolutely recognize that it is a disruption to our community, but do know that when CSX approached us to, with their maintenance schedule, they came in with the intent of closing all of those at-grade crossings at the exact same time, citywide, and, and we could not do that. And so we were able to work with them, our police department, folks in public safety, dispatch, everyone involved, engineering. We were able to work with them to come up with some alternative plans, and while, again, we recognize that there is disruption as they go through these improvements to the at-grade crossings, we, we have tried our best to minimize that with them. This is their work, and one of the things that we, this type of work reminds us of is the pecking order of highways and railroads. And the railroad reminds us frequently that their tracks do not cross our roads, our roads cross their tracks. In most cases, they were here first, and so we, we do have to work with them to the best of our ability, and they have been very cooperative. They are trying to move their work along very quickly, but we, we will be anxious for this project to come to conclusion. If you receive any communications or inquiries from any of your constituents, I do ask that you forward those to us. We'll be glad to follow up with those constituents to make sure that they know our schedules and what we're doing. We're using our media and we're using our internal social media as well to get the word out the best that we can to our community as it changes, and so we are updating that regularly. Last week, you attended Hometown Legislative Action Day with the Municipal Association and representatives from across the state. We had about 500 elected officials in Columbia for Hometown Legislative Action Day on Wednesday. But also equally important, we had a little over 300 elected officials from across the state that were in town on Tuesday to attend the Municipal Elected Officials Institute and the Advanced Elected Officials Institute. Six, five of our members were able to participate this year in that program. We look forward to continuing that and look forward to all of our folks being involved. We have the distinction now of 100% of our officials are graduates of the Municipal Elected Officials Institute, and we certainly hope that as we move forward, that we And we certainly hope that as we move forward, that we will have 100% participation at the advanced level as well. Training is critical for the jobs that you do. It is a changing environment out there. Laws are changing every single day. And the training is one of the opportunities that's made available to each and every one of us to keep us abreast of those. And I thank every one of you for your past and your current participation in that program. In conclusion, I'd like to share some really good news for a project that Councilmember Howard has been extremely involved in. You may recall during the budget process, she came to council and asked us if we would allocate some of our resources for sidewalk construction and repair and maintenance to be earmarked for a new sidewalk project over on the Hammock Bridge roadside. We were informed here, it says on January 28th, the Greer Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee met and approved a $235,000 C fund program for sidewalk along Hammock Bridge Road. The total project cost will be $250,000, $235,000 of that being provided by C funds and the Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee, and $15,000 being provided by the City of Greer. Ms. Howard, I cannot thank you enough for your diligence in working with those folks to make to do that. That is great leverage of resources. And so we are, we will enter into our agreement with them for that project, and we are anticipating that that will be a 2016 construction project. Want to make you aware of that. Good news for us in receiving that grant. Those are the items in my report. I would like to ask council's consideration for one item in executive session. It is a contractual matter that involves an offer for purchase of a piece of city property. I need to get some, provide some information to council and to outline the details of a potential contract, if that is council's desire for us to do so. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we'll move to items of old business this evening, the first of which is the second final reading of ordinance number 30-2015. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a piece of property and portions of a property owned by Column GSP 081 LP located on the northwest corner of Genovale Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 Industrial for said properties. As you will notice, Mr. Pace and myself apparently shop at the same store. We both have on the same shirt and almost tie this evening. We either both have good taste or no taste, one or the other. I'm not sure which one it is.
I wish tonight I had worn a long tie so I could mop up over here with the taste. It's a little water, and I'm trying not to get things wet over here. But again, Mayor and council, let me give you a summary of documents in regards to this. We've had some amendments take place to this in relationship to the parcels was combined into one, and this is the housekeeping, we get on track where we need to be. Just a second. Thank you. Email and ordinance with strike throughs already in it.
Take a section.
Again, when we started this process, we were looking at two parcels being annexed to the city, one entirely and one as a portion of a piece of property that were both on the same side of the road that were divided by Robinson Road in that area. So therefore, before the second reading, this area was re-surveyed. A new survey was presented. New tax map numbers were issued for the property, and therefore, that's what constitutes the changes or amendments that I am requesting in this ordinance. For the record and the title, there will be a strike through for the and portions of property, removing that, whereas column in the first paragraph, we will remove and the property tax number of 52400051.03. And the next page under number one annexation, again, it was 35 acres, portion of property and 6.5 acres of property. So we will remove those and add 41.58 acres. And again, further down in that same paragraph, we will move the tax map number as it is on the front sheet, and therefore, that would rectify any problems that we have in the future with mapping or any ordinance reviews that come about in the future. But believe me, we deal with the old annexations that happened even in the '50s today and trying to find some of those maps and documents that are supposed to go with them. It is rather difficult to do so. So we're doing this as a housekeeping action, but the planning commission did meet on the said property. No opposition or in favor was spoken at the request, and the planning commission does recommend for approval of said annexation and toning of I-1 Industrial.
Just as a matter of housekeeping, we normally would have done this on the first reading. Is the representative the owner of the property or owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record so indicate that no one spoke in that regard. So, all right. Mr. Pace comes with a recommendation from the planning commission then?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 30-2015.
Go move.
We now have a second. Floor's open for discussion or questions. Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have the second and final reading of ordinance number 1-2016, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Nancy M. Cox located at 2960 East Gap Creek Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R-12 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Again, Mayor and council, planning commission did review this on January the 11th. You will be in later discussions in executive session to discuss a portion of property as described earlier for purchase of a small portion of city property in order to complete the proposed subdivision as of before you tonight. No one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request that the planning commission, therefore, they did recommend you have approval of this committee.
Upon that recommendation, I'll entertain a motion to receive second and final reading of ordinance number 1-2016. Same move.
Same.
Motion on the second. Floor's open for discussion. Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we'll move to items of new business. The first reading of ordinance number 2-2016 comes before us this evening. It is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned by Carol Rowe and Nancy Gibson located on Finley Avenue and at 709 North Bane Street from R-12, which is our single-family residential, to C-3 highway commercial. Mr. Pace?
Again, Mayor and council, as you notice in maps and other documents that are in your packet tonight, this request was for rezoning of a portion of property that is owned by Mr. Carol Rowe, and there is concerns and questions from the public in regards to the entire parcel being adjacent to residential. However, the most prominent of this portion faces Highway 29 on the corner of Finley Avenue beside the furniture store, Bond's Furniture, just below it down to the tire stretch there. They are bringing forth a proposal to subdivide that and incorporate the front portion that has a finger that goes back to North Main Street behind the, can't think of the name, Waffle House. Yeah, directly behind the Waffle House. There's a strip property that goes back through there, and they would like to bring that portion also under that same zoning classification of C-3 and for the proposed use of construction of a restaurant in that area. And again, through meetings with the public and the planning commission, we talked about screening from the residential to the commercial areas and traffic concerns that the public does have in regards to that. However, after much debate and discussion, the planning commission did unanimously approve the request for annexation of that portion of the property. So I feel comfortable that if it moves forward with second reading, that we'll probably have an amendment to that ordinance, also getting it a tax map number that will assign it to that front portion of property, and it will be subdivided, and that will give us a hard boundary as to where that line is. But again, I bring that for you as information tonight. And again, planning commission did vote unanimously to approve said rezoning.
By show of hand, is a owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? So noted. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive 2-2016.
Motion.
Same.
Have a motion. The second floor's open for discussion. Mr. Pace, in regards to North Main Street, recognizing that that is indeed a state highway, in that, what is the extent of the zoning as we move to this piece of property here? We've got the convenience store, gas station on the corner, which would obviously be C-3 facing there on the highway. The zoning then for the restaurant, which sits behind that?
Waffle House.
That's the Waffle House.
The Waffle House.
It's also a C-3 also. So the extent of that would be the width of the driveway and...
You got them two, please.
Trying to recall, I think it's like...
I remember, I said it's all commercial.
25 or 30 feet approximately where that road or new driveway would end or end.
So this is compatible with, C-3 would be a compatible zoning with our comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Now, you said they're going to do part of it C-3, and the other part they're going to leave a...
Residential.
And that part, it's on the end?
Deeper end and backs up to Date Avenue and...
Oh, okay.
It's kind of an odd-shaped piece of property. It has another piece of property in there that kind of landlocks that. It's owned by the same family in regards to this, and it will remain residential also.
Okay, so you're saying by second reading, when it comes back, there'll be an amendment to it? Because right now, you've got one parcel that actually has, actually, well, you've got two parcels that have two different... How much, what is this black line? That's delineating where you want the C-3 to stop. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Red lines are property.
That's the entire perimeter of the property, all red lines.
Okay, so right now, we've got that small lot that you're talking about that's going to be landlocked.
Right.
And it has two, that, on first reading, it will have two zonings. But you're thinking by the second reading, that's going to be cleared up?
Yes, sir. We will make sure that that effort was cleared up with the property owner, that he does submit a replant of that that has been recorded and will provide a tax number for that, because he's taken a little portion of that other lot, and it's kind of, that's where we need to rezonate.
So the C-3 will be one lot completely?
Correct.
And now this, the flagpole, as I'm going to call it, that goes out to North Main, is that intended to be a drive?
Yes, sir. That will be used as entry into this property, ingress, address to this property. Also, it will more likely be able to obtain a curd cut from Wade Hampton Boulevard also, and access probably to Finley Avenue also. Going back north main gives you a lot of opportunity to get back to the signalized intersection to make traffic flow smoother.
Mr. Rowe, would you care to add anything to this conversation as we try to figure this out here?
My, here. I don't know. My name is Steve Rowe, and my sister and I own this property. I've had the distinct pleasure of inheriting it from my grandmother. I pay taxes on it since 1966 with nothing there but a few pine trees. I have a little bit better plan here that I presented to Mr. Pace earlier, and he is correct. We will have this into two tax parcels. The main piece of property will be commercial property, and the back will be one tax parcel, which will remain residential. The one more piece that you can see, this is the piece that runs behind the Waffle House and actually lived there as a child. So that house has been demolished for a number of years, but it will, for whatever reason, will remain until maybe the whole area goes commercial. I don't know. I grew up on these streets up here, and it was residential, as everybody knows. Nobody lives on Wade Hampton Boulevard anymore. And as a consequence, we're asking it to be rezoned for C-3. It will be a first-class restaurant, boat angles for those of you who are in the 1960s and sweet D.
I had to kill that.
And we will, we have a...
The human killer.
You have that.
Are you serious? It's going to be a baby?
It put the middle way. It could want to be anybody.
Well, I'm using a Bojangles pen this evening. I may have to recuse myself.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that helps clear this up. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Pace, there's no buffering on that, required on that road, that little strip next to Waffle House?
Again, it's Waffle House, no, sir. Not on the road, just of that width. It would only be required for the structure, location, put it down into the property. So what's identified as residential properties will have to be screened. And that can be by combination of fence burn plantings, six foot in height at the time of construction. And the fence, like I said, they didn't buffer that yard, and if they say screen in height is what it is. So that's what you're looking at, is a six-foot in height screen from the residential to...
Yes, sir. You want?
Yes, sir. My just is a, have to call here. The size of this property is such that it will be in compliance with all city codes with respect to screening, whatever. The little side piece there right now is a dirt road, and the person most affected by that is Carol Jones, and her son David were here. And once they sort of found out it was going to be improved, and they asked me to make an application. I couldn't give them. I said, I have no problem with it. It is not, actually, I think Ms. Jones has a building out back out, so she wanted to get in our house. So if she's happy, I'm happy. But we will comply with all city zoning and building codes with respect to fencing, screening, whatever these...
Counsel, I've got a motion and a second. Any further conversation in this regard?
Well, the resident, you, she wanted to say something, and I'd be interested to see what they said. If you come to podium. Yeah.
I'm Savannah Thompson, and I live on Finley Avenue. And I understand that the park that is facing Wade Hampton, absolutely, I know that he wants to put a restaurant there. I'm very, very concerned. I have a three-year-old and one on the way, obviously. I didn't even know it was tricky. And I'm very concerned. a ton of cars who don't want to bother sitting at the red light to turn right on Wade Hampton. They cut up McDay, cut down Finley Avenue. I saw, just couldn't get it tonight, four parts do that. And so, if there's a restaurant right there, they can't take a left because there's a median, there are all those trees right there, you can't take a left out of Finley Avenue or out of where the Bojangles is gonna be. So you would have to, if you wanted to take a left, you would cut up Finley and McDay, and that's just adding even more traffic to... And I'm not the only one that has children that lives in this neighborhood, all three of them, since the nephews live there. And actually, the property that you're talking about rezoning backs up to a couple, and they have an eight-month-old. That child's only gonna grow up and want to play. I don't want my son playing in the front yard, I know they don't want their granddaughter playing in the front yard when there's more traffic. And when we bought this house, it was very low traffic, it is, it's gonna be a lot more traffic, which is very concerning to us.
It is a traffic issue, and there also has been increased, I have heard that from the city. I live at 306 McDate Avenue, which is across from where the end line is. There's been increase in crime activity in the neighborhood, a lot of robberies, break-ins. We had a recent SWAT team that came down on the street this, over the summer, for a drug bust on the cul-de-sac and the corner, and I'm still bringing more traffic, more crimes in that area. If this does go through, I would like the information of any speed laws or something, so maybe detour, some extra time.
Or cul-de-sac, I know it come up, my husband brought up at the last meeting, to do maybe a cul-de-sac at the end, so Finley doesn't even connect to Wade Hampton at all. Thanks.
Mr. Rowe, I'm not gonna turn this into a public hearing. If you have something that's germane to the conversation, I'll let you do it, but we're gonna move on.
No, I was going to mention that one of the reasons that we had that strip that went out to Highway 14 was to alleviate some of the concern, the neighbors, and that traffic, rather than going back and coming around to 29 up to Highway 14, could go in and make a left turn there behind the Waffle House or a right turn, depending on what DOT says about that.
Thank you, sir. Council, we've got a first reading, a first reading and a motion for approval. Other conversation at this point? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, we have the first reading of ordinance 3-2016, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by KEM LLC located on South Buncombe Road by 100 percent petition and to establish a zoning classification of C-3 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Again, Mayor and Council, thank for the opportunity. I do have, I got a request in yesterday late afternoon that the tax map parcel has a change for this parcel also. We do not have a handout available or anything of that nature. It will remain the same property in design, but the new tax parcel number would be G-006-0001-00103. And again, I'll give you a copy of what we're requesting as a strike through, and that will also be on page two of the document under annexation number one, that same parcel. This is a parcel that is located on South Buncombe Road, this is where the rental company is there at Lancaster, Chick Springs, and Buncombe there on that intersection. A portion of that property is already in the city where Messer Vera was once located, that portion's in the city, and what goes behind it to Creek back there, and I'm telling you, the old Ryans corporate offices is already in the city. Parking area or lay-down area that he currently has, and the old Duncan GMC Pontiac dealership remain outside the city. What is proposed to do is annex the portion of the parking area, the lay-down area that was a part of the dealership, annex that, and build mini warehouses on the entire section that would be in the city. Therefore, removing the building that was there for Messer Vera will also be removed, and construction of mini warehouses for that area. The old dealership building itself and the footprint as it moves to Lancaster Avenue will remain outside the city.
Same property owner?
Excuse me?
Same property owner?
Yes, sir, yes.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Let the record indicate, no one said so. Entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion? So moved.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion or question?
So the change from this map, there's no change in the outline of the property, it's just the numbers wrong?
It is, the portion that we're annexing has now been identified with the Messer Vera property, they've already re-surveyed it and have recorded a document that I haven't got a copy of yet, but the engineer sent an email late yesterday stating that that was a new parcel on before that.
So they are combining the two parcels?
Yes, sir.
Part of it's in the city and part of it's not in the city?
Correct.
Can you do that?
You can't do that, but that's where we're moving through the process.
It has to be one parcel. That's what, it has to be one parcel.
I wouldn't have thought you could combine them until one is, until this one is in the city. I wouldn't think you can combine them prior to that.
It's a good point. Your point is absolutely correct, is that but for it all being in the city, it should not be combined.
Right.
But the recording of that took place, it's in the county, county has to do that somewhat without city approving that.
To your point, if you were to deny the annexation, we would challenge that and require that it be separated.
I understand. And this is a separate business from the one on the corner? Just the same property?
Same owner, but it will be mini warehouses instead of rental equipment that he currently has there.
I'm just curious, why does he want this to be in the city and not the rest of it?
City, sir, or utilities and services.
He doesn't need that on the corner?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Will there be any separation of the business? I'm like Riley, I'm a little bit confused here. Is there any separa, I know the business that we're talking about, is there gonna be any separation between the two businesses, the warehouse and that location where the old building used to be with the other corner?
Separation by, you'll enter into same drives with both businesses for rental supply. Now, what he's gonna do with all that equipment that he's got out there, it'll have to be relocated in order for the mini warehouses that he has proposed for his site preliminarily that we've seen and thus foreviewed. So everything there, and I'm assuming also, and by good practice, that they would fence entirely the mini warehouses from access or controlled access point there at their driveway into the property from Buncombe Road. They won't be getting another curb cut between their existing and the bridge, that's why Messer Vera had to move from where they were, because of the bridge.
Council?
I think it's, I think it's a good thing, other than it's just a little bit strange that they're not annexing the entire piece of property. I can, I can, I think I can understand why. That's all I thought. As far as buffering is concerned, are there any special buffers required for these types of...
No, sir. It'd be commercial against commercial.
Same zoning.
So it would be, it doesn't back up to residential or anything else, and the railroad track is another frontage that it has, and industrial to the back, and...
I meant as far as wrapping the facility itself on site.
No, sir, not in C-3. There are not any other requirements for the mini warehouses.
So the creek on this map is actually on the Ryans property?
There's some changes back in that area, but I believe the creek is the same line of the property. One time, Ryans owned the other side of the creek also, a small portion of it, so they sold that part or somehow traded that part or whatever with the interested party that's annexing his portion in the city. And that's why that slither across the back's already in the city, because it was part of Ryans, which already is in the city.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, first reading of ordinance number 4-2016, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Colom, GSP-08LP located at 1010 and 1014 Robinson Road by 100 percent petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Again, Mayor and Council, this will be directly south of the property on our first ordinance that we heard second reading tonight, again, joins Genova Road and Robinson Road. The request is for annexation of the two lots, and again, the purchaser of the property, Mr. Colom, Colom GSP-081LP, has requested annexation of these properties totaling about 12.7 acres, and the zoning request was for I-1 and industrial, which will go before the planning commission on February 15th for public review.
With that recommendation, do I hear a motion to receive number 4-2016?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? No one indicated so. Additional questions? Mr. Pace? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Council, executive session, we have one contractual matter to consider this evening. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. On executive session, we've considered one contractual matter, taken no action in that regard. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. On executive session, we've considered one contractual matter, taken no action in that regard. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. We stand adjourned.